I'd like to open the Stockbridge Board of Selectmen meeting for January 20th, 2022. Good morning. We have a fairly short agenda this morning. First, I'll move to open the hearing for Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid petition to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electrical conduits to be located on Main Street to provide service to 36 Main Street.
Say again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Roxanne.
Hi Chuck.
Okay, so do we have a representative from National Grid here this morning?
Oops, this is all that we have right now.
This is it, huh? Alrighty. Because I, you know, there's a few questions that I think are pretty obvious in terms of how long this will take, this kind of a project, and whether or not they're doing directional drilling, how they're going to specifically accomplish this.
Are we going to deny it depending on the answers, or do we just want to give Michael the ability to just figure that out?
Yeah, I would say, Mike, can you find out the answers to those questions so we can let the public know?
Yeah. We get up on contact, and the other thing we could do is go through the rest of the, just suspend the hearing, and if they return during this, if somebody logs on, we can immediately reopen the hearing.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm going to move that we temporarily suspend the hearing. All those in favor? Or second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
We're going to pick it up this meeting?
This meeting. And if not, the other option is just to continue it to next meeting. Or however you want to handle it, let's see if they show up. We'll just be...
Okay, so we, next on the agenda, we have Laurel Hill Association request to submit a report to the Stockbridge Annual Town Report. We all have that in our packets.
Right.
And I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at it.
This was brought up before the Select Board. You were on that?
Pardon me?
You were on when this was brought up the last time?
What?
Yeah, we talked about last year.
Last year.
Okay, we're all on it, right?
Right. You guys had made the decision that any request that comes in would, that's outside of town offices, would go to the Selectmen to be approved to be, it is your report to the town.
Exactly.
You control what you want in the report.
Right. I know, and I've gone through this, and I've read it, and basically, you know, they're just giving a report of the high points of what they've accomplished in the past year. And obviously Laurel Hill Association is great benefit to the town of Stockbridge, so I don't have a problem with including it in the annual town report. Chuck, do you have it?
I don't have an issue, but where does this open up for other entities to do this?
Then they also have to come before us, and we have to approve it.
Right.
I just don't want to open a can of worms if I have a 50-page report.
It is kind of a tradition in the town. They were in like over 100 years of reports, you know, and so to the degree that it's just something that's been done for a long, long time.
And you've got to remember, it's still our town report, so we still have that final decision-making about whether something should be included or should not be included on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and then if we approve this, and then next year if too many people come in, we can deny all of them.
Right.
Okay, I'm fine with that, as long as we have some control, we don't have to take everybody because we took one.
Right, no, we don't have to.
Okay, perfect. I'll make a motion that we allow.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Town project updates. Michael, you want to give us your updates on various projects?
So as we spoke, I'll just start quickly with the Larry Wog, that's a very simple one. We are in punch list items and a few remaining items that will be completed in the spring. I have sent the punch list report around to all the departments that are involved, water, sewer, highway, to take a look at it. And we received that from BSC Group, MICA, same group as Katie and them that do our MIP are doing the bridge project, so, and those items all be addressed in the spring. And the main thing will be, at some point, there'll be black topping, which could result in a day or two of possible closures, but nothing significant in that. And then the bridge will be completely finished, so, on task, on budget, on the rest, so, you know, overall, coming to an end, and it's open and people can use it right now. The other project that's in works right now is the Averick Road Bridge. It's been removed, they're working on the, you know, getting everything installed, getting it ready for the next phases of work. If you go up there, you can see they have the diversion pipes in for the stream, protect the banks, everything else, so that project is, is moving along well. Everything's going according to plans. We've run into a couple of small little changers, but nothing, nothing large. So overall, once again, project's on task. We should have that bridge open for the spring. So the plan was to go into winter, get the work done, and get the bridge and the park back open for the spring.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
The second part of that is obviously applying, we're going to be closing out our two small bridge grants, and already spoken to Mass Highway about applying for another small bridge grant in order to do the second Averick Road Bridge, and then try to get that one done and completed, and we'll be able to open that whole section. So that's the plan on that.
Do you have an estimated date for the Averick bridges? No?
Not the second one.
No, the first one.
The first one? Should be completed this spring.
Okay.
Yep. Exactly where, it'll depend, but so far the work's on task, so I would, you know, expect it somewhere around May, but give or take, yeah. The other one is the pump station, so the pump station is out to bid as of yesterday. So we're getting the bids in, and if everything goes according to plan, the work will begin on that. The bids are due February 23rd, they went out the 19th, they're due back February 23rd, then we'll evaluate, award the bid, and begin construction on the pump station down on Park Street. So that's out there. Ice Glen, the bid is ready to go after consulting with Ken, just timing-wise for when they could do it, and because you know that typically a bid, they'll hold the prices for 30 to 60 days window in order to do that, so we're not going back out again, we'll be releasing that bid. I thought we'd be releasing it at the end of January after talking to Ken, that it takes about six weeks to get through the budget process. We felt as though closer toward the end of February would be timing-wise in order to time it for the actual work that needs to be done.
Okay.
It'll be broken up into sections, so that depending on how the prices come in, we can still do Ice Glen. It'll be, to what degree and how much can be done will depend on what we get back for the bids, so.
Speaking of Ice Glen, I was wondering if the board would give Michael the opportunity, and Chuck, as the AFC, Agriculture and Forestry Commission representatives, to, there's a few projects Lisa Bezuto told me they want to do with CPC, and I'd like to just allow Michael to work with them to do the sort of expression of interest at Wednesday's meeting, you know, and, you know, because the town, you know, town-supported projects, I would like to pitch at the same time that, you know, non-town projects get pitched.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Do you want a motion, or do you want to just sort of give them, let them do it?
What?
Pardon me?
You have to vote on it, or just let them do it?
Yeah.
I think we can just designate them to follow up on that. And I would say also, apart from agriculture and forestry, we have, are there any other projects that it would make sense to put in for CPC funding?
Yeah, so.
Let's, let's also...
There's a couple on this report that I'm going to hit, and I'm going to bring those up during the work. So when we get to the end, we'll move.
Hey, I'm on the Select Board meeting, it's Hugh. I'll call you back, thanks. That was Hugh. Oh, that's funny.
So, Ice Glen, as I said, that'll go out to bid, we'll look at the CPC funding for some projects up there, which gets us now to the, to the next one, which is cemetery. So we do have the, we'll be meeting next week, the Cemetery Commission, going over the draft cemetery report, so I'm not going to get into it here yet, but commission's on it, but it is one of those things that has to be, the Cemetery Commission meets on what the next stage is, cost and everything else. That's another potential ask of the CPC, is to, under historical restoration, is restoring the historical section of the cemetery. The report's in, it's very comprehensive, I know it's around to the entire committee, very detailed on what needs to be done, and I think it's a lot to talk about next week as far as...
And that's going to be in the packet, the Cemetery Commission packet online?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and do you guys have any initial thoughts on what the three avenues of funding are, which is a general, you know, warrant item versus CPC versus the cemetery trust fund money? Just once again, going into CPC, I would love on Wednesday to pitch whatever we want to do.
Well, I think basically we should vote on the designation for this, so I move that we designate.
Before you do that, don't we have the, isn't the cemetery meeting before Wednesday?
It is.
So we can do that at this, we can figure it out with their input, and then just let it vote there.
Right.
And I think there's two pieces we've got to remember to CPC right now, is just developing a list of items that were just potential interest, and then obviously, before the final, before the deadline date, we have to submit the actual process. So at this point, just putting together that list of potential items to go and getting them expressed to the committee, then finalizing what goes to CPC, I would recommend we put it on the 27th meeting, so that Thursday, and then we can decide actually which of those that, even though we've expressed an interest, because, you know, it's just that at the next meeting, so.
Right.
I will bring these forward just to express an interest in them, and then you guys decide on the 27th if there's anything else that we need to do.
Before we move on, just wanted to mention, we have the boat ramp project, and I guess we didn't formally designate anyone to follow up on that.
So it's already been, the boat ramp has been followed up on. I have spoke to Doug Cameron, so that's on my list.
Okay, alright, sorry.
David Cameron?
David, sorry.
I thought, so he didn't leave?
No, Doug Cameron.
Doug.
DCR, not DEP, DCR.
DCR.
Oh, okay, good.
Boat ramp, so, yeah, so they are aware, they haven't put out the RFP, there are other projects in front of us. It is something that they will be doing engineering work to look at both the parking signage, potential of a kayak rack, and the rest, so. In speaking to them, that's what it is, you know, there, I believe there's, I forget how many, he said there were boat ramps in the state, they have six full-time employees that oversee all boat lakes, everything.
500 lakes.
Yeah, so.
Did he give us a timeframe of?
No.
No.
And there is no timeframe. So as they move through the, the other projects that they have, then we are, we are definitely on their list, we're, we're one of the next ones coming up, but, yeah, there is no timeline at this point, so he will be in touch as they, when they move to the next phase, so.
Okay.
It's a wait, wait and see. One thing was asked is whether or not some signage about making sure there's no swimming at the boat ramp.
Okay.
So he's going to send us some signs to put up there, which wouldn't be a problem, but my understanding is it's more of people walking down the bank with kayaks and canoes that are leading to the erosion, not the, not people necessarily swimming there, because there shouldn't be, boat ramps are not allowed to swim within.
It'd be nice if, you know, on that project list when they get to it, a more comprehensive, well-thought-out sign that deals with all the issues there, muscle, swimming.
He's, no, said that that's on their list, the signage has...
I mean, it's kind of...
It's a lack of, yeah, it needs to be coordinated, so they'd be looking at doing the whole, whole thing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, yeah. Chime Tower is going to be the next one I'll be working on, which I need to get some things finalized with historic, but once again, trying to put out a bid late spring because we'd like to do the work over next winter season, since most of it can happen. We spoke about this before, something that would happen after, at the earliest Labor Day, preferably after Columbus Day of this year, because scaffolding and other stuff would have to bump around the Chime Tower instead of trying to do it during the summer when it's our main turf season, so. We're, be finalizing all that and getting that out to bid in the late spring, and then moving forward.
Just go back to the lake for a second, you know, it would be great if there's any money we need to, you know, finish the dredging plan, the engineering plan, and/or the lake management plan that we also, you know, let CPC know. They've funded obviously both of those projects in the past.
Alright, yeah. I'm actually going to be working today with Erica and Cheryl about just getting all those details to the CPC committee, so you know exactly where you stand on everything and what projects. And there are some pullback projects for this year, such as, we save some money, the, overall, the money cost for Proctor Roof, which is completed, what came in under what was asked for the CPC. So those monies are no longer needed and can be pulled back in, be used for another project, so.
I like that term, pullback.
I know.
It's kind of a flab.
In terms of CPC, in terms of under historic, I think another thing that we want to look at is obtaining some funds to pursue some kind of a memorial, historic memorial to Mumbet, because Stockbridge is the town where she came for help, and received help, and became a free woman. So I think that's another category that probably, I don't know that it's heavily hit in terms of historic, so I think that's something that probably...
I think historic's the hardest one hit, if I remember out of all our CPCs.
Is it really?
What do you mean, hit?
Oh, it's harder to request.
Terms of money, money requests, financial requests.
Wendy, I don't understand what hardest to hit means.
Most requests.
Most requests.
Oh, sure, but, you know, but in general, the CPC views town requests as the priority, so, and the other, along those lines...
What I'm saying is, I'm not sure what we're asking or what we're, because this, just bringing up now, what, you know, is that a project for this year's CPC, or a project maybe to apply for next year's CPC, because I'm not sure what we're asking for, or, you know, maybe we can put that on for the 27th and brainstorm it at the next meeting to figure out, is it, if I go to CPC, I'm not sure what I'm asking for.
Well, it could be that it's basically to engage in a study to design, you know, some initial funding to like actually pursue that, and then obviously there'd be a follow-up if somebody comes up with a great idea, and then we have some actual costs involved.
And do we have a sense of what the Revolution of War Memorial is going to cost, and do we need to, any CPC funds for that?
Yeah, that we don't know yet.
I don't know.
That we can find out.
Okay.
You know?
Alright, so that's another one.
That one we can find out, because the only thing, the only cost involved there is going to be basically the engraving of the stone.
Yeah.
That's the major cost.
Yeah.
Highway can probably put it in.
And where is it going to go? Do we know?
Yeah, it's going to go at the regular, where all the other monuments are now by the Chime Tower.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, good. The other one that fits into capital projects, because it's multi-year and cost, will be, we do need to look at, and I know Fire Chief had put it in last year, possibly as a budget item, was painting, cleaning up the Glendale Fire Station. So that's one that I am planning on, was planning on putting in interest for the CPC funding.
Okay.
For that, to get that building cleaned up, windows need to be cleaned up, things like that, obviously, you know, with a historic building, so, well, we're not throwing cheap vinyl windows in, we need to look at what we need to do to do it right, so.
So generally with CPC, one of the questions on the form is, what are your other sources of funding? And I think that, you know, just looking at how many hundreds of thousands of dollars is on this list already, that we probably want to kind of think about, you know, warrant items for something like 50%, and then CPC for 50%, you know, because, I mean, cemetery's like 250, Ice Glen could be another, you know, I don't know, God only knows, and we're going to be 100 grand short, you know, the fire station, I think is what, 75? You know, so I think maybe what we do is we kind of, you know, go half-seas, something like that.
I'll, I'll note, I'll note the projects that we have an interest in.
Yeah.
And then at the next meeting of the Select Board, we'll discuss what percentage is everything, and I'll come with the estimated price tags, and we'll go through each of those and decide what we're asking for the formal request. But right now, I can definitely express what we're interested in applying for.
Yep.
And just walk them through those projects.
Yes.
And I think there'll be some other projects that will come forward, probably from some subcommittees.
Parks and Rec is one I'm specifically wondering about.
Yeah.
And I would, I've, I've talked to Steve and to Nicole, I haven't talked to Nick yet, but, you know, I, I think that they've got some ideas of things they want to do, so once again, we just want to, I believe that they're, they're planning on attending, they actually have a seat on the CPC, so, you know, we don't necessarily have to like, you know, they can, they can pitch their own projects if they want, but it'd be just nice to know, you know.
And the only other large capital project is, you know, looking at the replacement of one of our fire engines, which we have applied for, this is the firefighter grant through the federal government, so looking to try to get the cost of that covered by a grant, so.
Well, then there's the question of the campus hydrology study, you know, we're going to apply for the MVP grant, but, you know, those are really competitive, so we may not get it.
Right, and whether or not, you know, that can be brought up as a potential, once again, CPC fund, or potential town fund, or what, and depending on how things play out, so, yeah. Yep. And, and that's all of them except for the Tuckerman, but that's next on the agenda, so.
Right, so why don't we go over the Tuckerman Bridge assessment?
Right.
See where we're at, because we don't want the bridge to get to the point where it has to be completely closed.
Right. So, let me just, do you want me to throw it up on the screen, the report?
Sure.
So.
Nobody else did.
I know.
I found one math error, I think we're supposed to do the cube root of something, not the square root.
Oh, idiot.
Do you do that report? It's a whole equation, it's just like, oh my God.
We'll ignore the mathematics of all of that. So, last year, as we began looking at projects, one of the projects brought up was the, was the Tuckerman Bridge water line, water, sorry, not water line, putting a water line under the bridge by the Water Department. What happened is, is that, what we did is we requested, because it had been a couple years since we last had a bridge inspection report, so we requested the last bridge inspection report, which was like three years ago, and that identified that there was a critical failure on the bridge. Now, I know people say, oh my God, critical failure, you know, what, what it does mean is that what's happened over time is that the bridge has been lowered in the amount of weight that it can carry, specifically around the trusses underneath, and you can see right here the trusses that have eroded.
What's a truss?
The metal...
Support.
The support system.
Okay, thanks.
Run from the side, and, you know, there's a number of them that have led to the structural lowering of the amounts. Now, what's going to happen is this bridge is basically on, I'm trying to see where the other photos are, but, yeah, what's, you can, you can see by the ones I put up that they, they definitely, you have some cracking in the foundations, you have some, the truss itself that's rotted, that's where the critical failure is, which has led to the rating of the bridge going down. So this bridge has fallen the same trajectory that our other bridges are, which means that at some point, we're going to probably receive a letter saying that the bridge needs to be closed. So right away, once we realized that we have this bridge, instead, we took the water money and we commissioned the study, but we tailored the study and asked Forsyte to make the priority, the assessment of the bridge first, which, once that was done, identified that we need to address the bridge before we go and stick a water line on it, so. So this led to this report. This is just the first feasibility conceptual of the rest. And there are three options that have been laid out, they're, they're recommending the first, the third option, which is the, is the full replacement, so, you know, based on, as you can see here, they talk about the degree of cross-section metal loose due to past corrosion and cracking and the rest, you know, we're looking at somewhere around the construction and engineering about $770,000.
Yeah, they're...
This would be the least expensive, but it also is more of a temporary addressing of the situation. It would allow us to, it would put the load lower at eight, and it would take care of eight tons, and it would clean up some of the stuff underneath, but, you know, it's not, it's not a good permanent solution. They do look at lower rating of the bridge with some work, and then the third option, which they are recommending, is, is a full deck and truss replacement. And once again, when you put the numbers together, you're looking at a $2 million project.
Right.
We, myself, Mike, Foney, Tony, and Hugh all met at our monthly Public Works meeting, and we discussed this very thoroughly, you know, we're recommending that we look at the full replacement of the bridge. What we'd like to do is instead of like, with the other bridges where they were closed and then come up with a plan, we'd rather come up with a plan, close it ourselves, spend about a year, year and a half, rebuild the bridge and open it right back up, instead of this letting the bridge be closed by the state, waiting years even to get to design and then having it out. What I'm going to be asking from the Select Board and the Finance Committee going to town meeting, is that we get, and they're going to give me, you know, when they say estimated design cost $330,000, I want them to get us to 75%. They're going to put us in a bid so that basically we're ready to go, the final 25 will be the final pieces, but what I'm going to be doing is asking, and they're going to give me a price to get us to a 75% construction design, so that we can go out if a shovel-ready project becomes available. So right now, the federal government did have the Transportation Bond Act, which they did pass, at the federal level, monies go into the states. So far, how the state is going to distribute the infrastructure money has not been defined yet, we talked about it at our last managers' meeting, so I want us ready that when they say, oh, we're going to funnel it either through the Mass Works program, or, you know, whatever program they're going to take the money through, that we have a shovel-ready program to say, hey, here's the project, we're looking for funding for this. It'll take about a year to get through what's called Chapter 85 Design, because of the structure of the river it's over, this is a much more substantial design than, say, the Larry Wog actually, because you are going over a river, there's a whole different category, so it'll take about a year, so I want us to get, get that engineering starting, getting us as quickly as we can onto being ready to go after funding, and then depending on how it plays out, go from there, so.
Okay, but the consensus with water, sewer, highway, and yourself is a full replacement? This is the full replacement?
The recommendation?
The whole thing comes out, it's completely rebuilt?
The whole thing comes out except for the foundations.
Okay.
So the original foundations are the oldest section of the bridge, and are more the unique design of the bridge compared to the rest of the bridge, that is a fairly standard bridge design for steel, you know, support and the rest, and they showed pictures of, and it's right here.
Would this include then work on that foundation as it exists?
We have to examine, so I was trying to get the photo up of, which shows, let me see, such a big document, I moved just a little bit, it throws, it'd be like 20 pages long, there we are.
Yeah.
Why does it keep doing that? Oh, because I didn't click on it.
Or you use the down page one, which is up in the left.
Yeah, but when I, I was trying to jump ahead, so, you can see right here that there are some concerns about, they mapped the cracking of these foundation stones, so these foundations are, are older. And we did ask them whether or not because of flood, flood levels now, the bridge itself may have to be actually built slightly higher than the existing bridge because of the current 100-year flood designs, and what they, what, what the engineer said is what they've done to keep historic, if the foundations are in good shape, what they actually can do is they would basically pour a pad on top of this to raise the bridge, and we're only talking maybe a couple feet raise. You actually wouldn't see it because the bridge supports and everything would be hidden, and they could, they could raise the bridge a couple feet using the existing ones. What they did say is that we would have to put what's called scouring controls, so basically, probably some type of sheeting or the rest to... So basically, probably some type of sheeting or the rest to protect these older foundation stones from the river itself, so that they're not taking the brunt of it anymore. But that was, that was in their design. The only thing that's not in their design is if they core test these and for some reason, these are not stable going forward, now the cost could escalate, because now we're talking about completely repouring and redoing um the foundation post. But at this point, they didn't see any reason why, other than some cracking, which would be injection of different polymers that would hold it and then scouring control, you know, but some of that would have to be done within that next phase of Chapter 85 Design of a bridge.
Right.
Okay.
Um, two questions. Uh, one, while the top of the bridge may be like kind of, you know, uh, uh typical, you know, uh steel design, it is still kind of the iconic look of that bridge. And, and it might be nice to figure out, even if it was sort of a cosmetic thing, how we, how we kind of maintain that look, even though it looks like the whole bottom of the bridge is gonna get replaced. And my second point is just, I think we should consider for, is the engineering on Everton done?
The, the design, the, not construction yet.
No, the engineering.
The, the initial engineering, not Everton is the
I mean, I think we should consider a special, because of the, the federal money is gonna be um timely. I think we should consider a special town meeting and just approve the engineering for this. I think we should get it started right away, because the sooner we have it done, the easier it is gonna be to pitch some of those infrastructure funds.
Yeah, and, yeah, um, so, I mean, that is, that is something that you can do. It's, it's going to take uh a, at least a year to get through the Chapter 85 process.
Yeah, well, okay, but that, that puts us, if we were to, if we were to announce a new special town meeting in February, we could be done by next winter, rather than waiting till mid next year when all that infrastructure money may be stopped up. There's a lot of projects in the state and in this country, you know, I, I feel, I feel like we gotta get in line as soon as we can.
Right.
I think three months matters is my point.
We may also have a situation with a red line in intersection where if we had another, we had a special town meeting
Yeah.
again, you know, it could be approved and on its way, rather than delaying it all.
Yeah.
I don't know, what do you think Chuck?
Yeah.
Think it makes sense?
Makes sense.
I don't know about February, I don't think that that's necessarily reasonable, maybe March.
Engineering estimates and the rest, because we're not even sure what price, exactly what price tags we're going after, yeah. So, um, I should have that shortly, maybe, let's put that on the 27th to discuss further.
Okay.
Okay. I think it's earliest available is what I would support, whatever that date is, you know.
Right.
And then as we move forward with projects, the other thing is to know that like, you know, something like the intersection is already designed, so it could go for federal fund. Everton Road Bridge, second design is already ready to move forward. Um, it's just that, in my book, the Tuckerman rises, you know, was an unknown that now rise to the point that is one of our priority.
Did, did we fund the Curtisville engineering?
We have an initial on the Curtisville from a number of years ago, which needs to be updated, so.
Exactly.
Prices for that. So we, we've got a lot of stuff going on. The nice thing about the Everton Road, the second Everton Road Bridge is it falls underneath the Small Bridge Program.
Right.
And specifically because they funded the first one, they did not fund the first one with the anticipation of just doing one. They, they, they're gonna wanna see that road open.
Alright.
Um, so that, that's gonna be the next phase. So we've got a lot of juggling parts right now and we have things that we can still move forward. Um, with the other, speaking of the intersection, which um the small, the shared roads and program came out and one of it is up to 200,000, which includes crosswalks. So speaking of VHB, there were two components of the intersection, which was the intersection and then the, the crosswalks from Main Street up to Town Hall.
Right.
Um, they could actually be separated into two separate projects.
Right.
And, and VHB already did that, so I can apply for the small street, or the shared street grant for up to 200,000 to get that piece done.
Right.
Right.
Which then leaves just the intersection on its own.
Right, but the other, the other public safety one we could also maybe look at, because that is ARPA, uh we, so we can use ARPA for, is, you know, the, the, that weird sidewalk that ends over by Heaton Court, because that used to be a golf course. They used to go to there, but you know, looking at trying to bring it around the corner to Namke, if it's possible, you know, at least figuring out the engineering might be something also to kind of consider for all this.
Quite a bit of what we're looking at is a lot of engineering that needs to be
Yeah.
Uh, and, and one that we'll talk a little further, but it's probably gonna be through the Water Commission and, and that is uh, well, not the Water Commission, but looking at the storm water system, we're still evaluating that. Specifically, that's, that's one that I'll be targeting ARPA for, because storm water, um, water and sewer are all included in ARPA. I don't believe sidewalks are in the ARPA one.
Okay.
Could be in the transportation infrastructure.
Right.
We can make coverage.
There's different sources and I did send yesterday out, because they have released the final guidance on the ARPA, um, an 18-page overview of what you can do, and that's just a, just a very generic one compared to the complete document. So, but it gives you an idea of what projects we can take on with ARPA, so that we have a full understanding of ARPA, because we can't use it for bridges, we can't use it for, there's only certain things that we can use it for.
I just feel like we, you know, even if, even if, you know, to, to uh your idea of, of doing a, a multi-year sort of priority plan, that's fine, but getting the engineering started on this stuff will help us make those priorities. I don't know how we do without the numbers.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
So speaking of that, if we want to begin addressing a priority projects, if there are I could act as the, the middle person, if you guys have any ideas of things you wanna, I can begin compiling the lists. So obviously you guys, if you guys individually wanna send me and say, hey, here's things that I'd like to look at, we can develop a nice big list of all of them, and then as a group, you guys can decide, here's the ones we want you to focus on in our priority. And it can be clumping them, doesn't have to be one through 10. It could be, you know, green, yellow, red projects, okay, these are the, the
Different categories.
Three-year, the three to five-year, and here are the projects eventually to get to. So we, there's different ways to look at it, but the main thing is, is there anything that I'm not aware of that the town would like to see focused on?
And I think in terms of having like the overview of where do we wanna go and what do we think our priorities are, it isn't just infrastructure.
Right.
This can be anything. So I think it's gonna be important to like maybe come up with, you know, on our own, um, what we, what various categories and the kinds of projects or direction that we think that the town should be going in. That's, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Something like I'm looking again at updating the master plan, um, doing something like that and putting these priority projects and then really pushing us ahead and then staying, once we get ahead, staying ahead of these projects, so.
Awesome.
So do we have anything else?
Nope, and I
And do we have National Grid?
What?
Well, we have to see if National Grid has shown up.
Alright.
Has shown up.
Let me end the sharing and there's no one else on.
This is here. Hi, parents.
Parents, yeah. The quick announcement of Tuesday, January 25th at 5:30 is the Regional School District Planning Board presentation of the three options for discussion for the town. That in conjunction with the discussion of the new high school, which has been applied for to the state, you know, uh, I forget what the acronym is, but the, the state folks who provide match funding for the high school. These are a couple of the most consequential decisions that our eight towns and, or three towns are gonna face. I just wanna encourage anybody who's interested in schools to come to this Tuesday, January 25th meeting, because it's gonna outline what the options are and community input is now, it's now or never in terms of input.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so.
What's going on for National Grid? Um, it is a pretty stand straightforward under, you know, obviously, if there are any sidewalks or other disruptions, those would all be handled through um trench permits and the rest. I don't know if it's directional drilling, but I can find out the information so that we have it. Um, so it depends on how you guys.
Right, well, I mean, the fact that no one from the public showed up, um, I would, uh, so I'm gonna move that we resume the hearing of the National Grid petition. Do I have a second?
To the next meeting.
You wanna go to the next meeting?
Well.
You would prefer?
Well, I don't wanna, I gotta be ready.
Pardon me?
You just wanna postpone until they can show up, so we got questions, right?
Well, we do. I was gonna move that we go ahead with a proviso that Michael will get the answers to the couple of questions, so that can be shared with the public. But, you know, it's a pretty straightforward request, so, but if, if you would rather wait, it's fine.
That's reasonable, no, that's fine.
So I'm moving that, that we resume the hearing, um, so we can make a decision.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah.
So that we can vote.
First, we gotta resume it, technically.
I thought we did that, yes, I'll, I intend to resume it.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now I move that we close the public hearing.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, I think that's basically my idea, is that I think it's pretty straightforward. It's just to separate out um the metering, I believe, for the, you know, the property has been purchased and so they wanna separate out and have separate meters. Uh, and, but with a proviso that might get those answers, so that the public um can be advised as to how long this project will take, how are they actually approaching it, when is it actually going to happen?
Yeah.
So I move that we accept the petition with those conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Patrick.
Aye, Roxanne.
Aye, Chuck.
Alright, thank you.
Do you want to do a turn?
Second, all of us in favor? Alright.